Just catch my breath.
Did you forget your calls?
Yeah.
I think we at least came to that consensus.
Oh, he must have thought they were right. They don't listen up.
Bring you make food there.
Oh, cool.
Tell me when you feel ready.
No potluck.
Bringing food.
Sort of like a Christmas version of Friendsgiving.
Yeah, you show up anywhere between.
Where did she live?
Of Jefferson.
Okay.
Made it there. Still waiting for a few great shows. So we'll see how it's gonna be a good thing or...
Jeff, you ready?
Yeah.
County.
All right.
Okay, folks, we're gonna begin the Iowa City City Council work session for Tuesday, December the 18th, 2018. The first topic is the proposed Community Police Relations Board ordinance change. And before we get into that, I want to thank Orville and Monique for coming on behalf of the full board and to make sure you understand how important we know the board is, how important the work is, and how much we appreciate the good work that you're doing. So thanks for coming, and we'll hear how this conversation goes tonight. I'm gonna ask Eleanor to briefly summarize what the difference is here with regard to item 11, which is the main thing we'll be discussing on the proposed ordinance change. Eleanor, could you do that, please?
Sure. I thought particularly for Bruce's orientation that I'd just give a very...
These things don't sound like they work. I mean, I hear it, but it's not... There's not much volume.
Yeah, there is not.
That'll work.
Try and answer it, Evans.
Hello? No? I'll try and tell... Is that better? Okay.
A little bit better.
Okay, so to kind of orient Bruce a little bit, just do a quick overview of the CPRB. I keep in my mind as PCRB, the CPRB process. So essentially, the board was set up to review complaints of police misconduct. So a complaint can be filed with the board. It's one of a number of places where a complaint against the police department gets filed. But it can be filed with the board within 90 days of the incident. The complaint is then turned over to the police department to do an independent investigation. And the police department does these investigations like they do any complaint of misconduct, whether that's generated by command staff or whether it's generated, it comes from outside the city. And there's a particular process that they have to go through in interviewing the officer, and I kind of explained that a little bit in my memo. And thinking back to when the origins of this board, I think there were a couple reasons why council decided to do it that way. One, the notion that the police department is responsible for policing itself and needs to do that initial investigation. And then more logistically, the police chief is the only person, because he's got disciplinary authority, who has the ability to compel the police officer to talk to him. And that's not something that the board is able to do because they're not in a position to provide the officer immunity from criminal prosecution, or the officer to make, to claim his Fifth Amendment rights. So then the police department does the investigation, and the police chief sends a report to the board explaining the findings of the police department. And at that point, the board can decide how, what level of review they're going to give that report. And there's a series of, you know, from less intense to more intense. The first one is just on the record, reviewing the information that has been provided to them by the police chief. And it goes all the way up to hiring an independent investigator to do their own investigation before they issue their conclusions on the police chief's report. So with that background, the only staff, as you saw, supported the changes that were proposed by the CPRB. The only one that we had some concern about was the... There were a couple suggestions about what to do if the police chief and the PCRB don't reach the same conclusion, or CPRB don't reach the same conclusion. And one of them is that they sit down in closed session, where the board holds most of these conversations, and have a discussion about it. And the police chief can give you his thoughts on that, but he was very supportive of that because at least my sense in looking at these reports has been that it's often a sense of just different perspectives on the same situation, not so much that there's a difference in the fact findings. So we agreed with that proposal. But then the board suggested that if there's a disagreement between the police chief and the CPRB, that at that point then, the board would have the option of having an independent investigator review the case. And the staff stated why we didn't think that was, that made a lot of sense, both from an investigative perspective, because at that point, you know, the facts are, have been revealed, and that's usually what you want to do, those kind of investigations, before everybody's aware of what everybody else is saying. Also, the board has the ability to do, hire an independent investigator at the earlier state, at an earlier stage in the game, when that type of investigation would seem more And then I tried to explain as briefly as I could about, again, how the, an independent investigator is not going to have the same access to the police officer as the police chief does because of those Fifth Amendment and compelling testimony principles. And I think the police chief can add more to that if he wants to in terms of what he thinks the best mechanism is for ferreting out those differences in the conclusions reached by the CPRB and the police chief.
If you folks concur, let me just see if this suggestion works. It might be good to hear from the chief and also hear from one of the board members, I don't know, Orville or Monique, or just to see if we can, if there's anything you want to add or modify in terms of what Eleanor just described. Chief, could you add anything you want to add or help us understand?
Absolutely. Jody Mathely, please, chief. You know, the CPRB is such an important mechanism. We're one of the only ones in the state that even has such a civilian oversight board. You know, as we look at police reform the last few years, these types of committees, these commissions have been critical and instrumental in successes of police reform. It certainly adds a layer of lens from the public and the community's point of view and a sense of transparency, but it also builds confidence so folks that maybe wouldn't ordinarily complain about our actions or something that occurred are now more comfortable taking that action. So I applaud the city for having this board. I will tell you, I had folks when I first started here said, you know, "I don't know about a CPRB. That might be tough to deal with." You know, we have state ombudsman, I had an ombudsman at one of my past agencies, and they're the same type of mechanism, and they're a good thing. So the process has been good. As far as fine tuning the process, I think it was needed to be able to have a conversation to talk about, you know, why it is the decision I made, what our training dictates, what our policies say, what's the latest training we have, and the procedures, and the court cases, and things that are very dynamic in our job. And this is why we have Kalia, our accreditation process, because things are always evolving in our jobs because of these different things that occur in rulings and how we need to conduct ourselves. So being able to sit down and explain that and why we're taking the action that we did and why we had the conclusion that we did is critical. That being said, they may very well shed light on something that I missed. I'm a human being, so I'm not too big to say that, you know, "You know what? I like your point of view, and I understand that, and let me take another look at this." So I could certainly do that if needed. But we go through several layers of process when we do this, from our city attorney's office to our command staff, starting with the officer's immediate supervisor. So this has a lot of set of eyes on it when we do this. And so I want everybody to have confidence that it's not just me that comes to this conclusion. It's many, many people in many arenas for the city that have the interests of the city, the complainant, and the officer, all in mind for due process and to reach the right conclusion. So that's about all I've got. Are there any questions for me or any comments?
Maybe we should hear from Orville and/or Monique, and then council members can ask any of the three people questions.
Thank you.
Right.
Well, we thank you all for listening to this proposal that we have. And, you know, we were fortunate to have a great relationship with the chief, and, you know, police come to our meetings, and we just want to make some oversight for, you know, there's going to be personnel change at some point on our board. There might be personal change, you know, among the police staff. So we just want to make sure that these oversights and protections are put into place for the future, just in case there is ever time where there isn't such a great relationship. So our main concerns are just that if we have a difference of opinion with the chief, that there are some protections so that, you know, if there are any necessary, you know, changes, if we do need to bring someone in, that, you know, that we're able to do that. So did you want to?
Yeah. And basically, I think, you know, we're fortunate right now. I mean, the concerns that I would have are not about the police chief we have now, but I think basically you appoint an advisory board, and I think it's important that you utilize that board and get feedback from that board so that it will allow you to make better informed decisions. Now, having one of you guys come to the meeting, that could be not too good because it kind of parrots your thinking. But one of the things I would recommend that we do is that the council appoint two council members to meet with our board twice a year. Because when I first came on the board, you know, there's a lot of things that I saw that I had a lot of concerns about, and, you know, they just went on with no attention. So I would say basically it's important that you not only point us, but you also keep a relationship with us so that we can give you feedback that helps you to make informed choices and decisions. So I think meeting with us twice, twice a year, have two appointees to meet with us twice a year for feedback would be a very positive thing, and hopefully that would go in the audience as something to be ongoing. Sometimes I kind of feel like our board is a rubber stamp because, you know, we meet, we look at the tapes and things, and we make our recommendation, we write our report, and we never hear anything. I'm sure that someplace in a final report at the end of the year, that information's there. But another thing I would like to see is that when we give our written recommendation to the board, "If possible, could you give us some kind of written feedback to let us know what was the outcome of that?" Not necessarily that we're gonna be upset if you don't agree with us, but, you know, we just like to know what, you know, what's going on, you know? And maybe with some indication as to what was the rationale, if it goes against our recommendation. I mean, anything you can do along the way that basically would help us to feel like we're actually doing something, it would really help. But right now, you know, we meet and we write a report, but, you know, it's like if the chief agrees with the officer and we disagree, the way it is now just seems like we just go through emotion. So it would be really nice if we can have a better system where it seems like we're working closer together and that all part is involved or productive and, you know, actually achieving something.
Okay. Hang tight. Let's see if there are questions for you, Jody, or Eleanor.
I have a question relating to the early-stage outside investigator. It's my understanding there is a process to get an outside investigator early on. Is that correct? Why would that not be an adequate remedy at the earliest stage? Because I understand that that would be someone from the outside to be able to investigate it as opposed to afterwards. And the second related question is, is do you have the authority now to write a dissenting report once the police chief makes the recommendation if you disagree with it?
Right now, I'm not sure if there's any recourse if we do have, you know, difference of opinion. So I think that's kind of one of our main concerns, why we were interested in an investigator afterward, because sometimes it's like, I know we don't have the power as a body, as a disciplining body, but just to make sure that there's some sort of process in place when we have a disagreement that is just, doesn't just go into the ether, that there's some sort of recourse.
Yeah. And, you know, we do have the right, like, if we look at the chief's report and we don't agree with it, then we can, you know, request an investigator to look at it. We have that authority right now, you know? And I just like to say, you know, it's like as a police review board, everybody would just pounce and say, "Wow," you know, it's like they want to pounce on the police chief and the staff. That's not the case. I think we're in a good place right now. What we're asking you to do is consider change, and I can't think of a better time to make change than right now while we do have a police chief that's basically doing a good job, that's actually interested in the community, and basically doing things to, you know, solidify the situation as opposed to division. So this is a good time for the council to, you know, put some changes in because we've got a system and a police chief that's gonna support it.
I have a question for Eleanor. You said when they hired independent investigator, say if he said, "Yeah, this complaint is sustained," after he did his investigation, what's gonna happen?
Well, the board has the ability to hire the independent investigator to determine what the board's conclusion is. They don't have to do that. They can do just review the information provided by the police department. But if they for some reason think that they need a more thorough investigation or they need a more independent investigation, they have the right to request that.
Oh, you mean like instead of accepting the police chief report, they will hire somebody else to investigate it and...
It's not a question of accepting the police chief. They review the police chief's report, and then they make a public report, as you know, to the council about what their conclusions are. And the question is, what tools do they use to help them reach that conclusion? And there's a whole list of tools. Some is they can do their own investigation, they can hire an independent investigator, they can subpoena witnesses, et cetera. And so I think one of the concerns of staff is that ability to hire an independent investigator is already present, and the time to do that, it seems, is early on. Because the point of the investigation is to ferret out the facts, is to find out what the facts are. It's not to resolve a dispute between the police chief and the board.
Eleanor, could I add to that? You know, we've reviewed a lot of cases, but we haven't hired an outside investigator. And I think the reason for that is we haven't had a case that has a lot of information that's very strong and devastating where a person was actually, you know, really treated unfairly. Most of the cases we look at, you know, they're kind of small. I mean, they're important, but they're, I don't think they're important enough for us to go and hire an investigator because it's just not gonna be a lot there. But now in the future, we run across a case where it was blatant, then we would probably hire the investigator before we submitted our report to the council.
Yeah.
So prior commissions have used the, their own investigator, but the current...
I don't recall the CPRB ever hiring an independent investigator. And I think what Orville says, it makes a lot of sense to me.
A lot of the cases that, you know, from my perspective on it, a lot of the cases that we reviewed, you know, my greatest concern was satisfied simply by making a recommendation to the chief that maybe training is needed to improve this. You know, one of the things that I ran across was, you know, I think an officer basically kind of responded to a citizen, but he was responding with an attitude of, a personal attitude as opposed to the officer and the professional attitude. And that could be corrected with training. So I think a lot of that is what we do. We haven't had anything that's really serious and blatant.
I think the question is, what is the best remedy when there is a disagreement between the police chief and the board? And in our mind, that's conversation between the police chief and the board, and resolution if possible, and change for down the road of how they look at things. That is the remedy for that, not a further investigation of the facts.
I, as a formal police review board, like Berson, I'm gonna tell you. When I was there, I really feel I'm powerless. You know, even though this is, as the police chief mentioned, this is really important committee, you know, and it is unique. It is the only one of its kind, I guess, in the whole estate. But think about it, we have three avenues for a Berson to file a complaint. He can file it with the police department, police review, and the human right. If there is three, this, I can choose anyone. But if the police chief will say, "This complaint is sustained," and the police review board will say, "Oh, we review it, it's not sustained," what's gonna happen after that? Nothing was happening. I was there, and we sustain a complaint, and the police chief was saying this is not sustained, but nothing happened. Sustain a complaint, just put it on the file, come to the council, the council had not done anything about it, and that's it. This is, will give me, why should I have a police review board if there is another avenue for the police chief, for the person to file? What's the difference between the person filing with the police chief, and he will sustain it, not sustain it, and with the police report? And the police chief will come and not sustain it, and those will come and sustain it, and nothing gonna happen? The police review board to tell you the truth, "I'm sorry, you've been doing a good job," but it's powerless when it comes to a sustain of complaint, and the police chief is not sustaining it. That's why I think this committee have to have a power. And now it is very good relationship between the police chief. Our police chief is awesome. I understand that you really drive this community, like you made a lot of progress in making justice in this community. But as she said, we never know who's coming next. We need, and we never know who's council coming next. We need to have something here.
I think we need to look at some realities. I mean, when you look at the boundaries that we're functioning within, it's unique, but it's different. You've got the police chief who basically is looking at it from a view of what he has to deal with, the regulations and things like that, the union. You've got the police review board, we look at it because we are individuals in the community. And I've been here since 1962, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm really pushing to get as many changes as I can in the written statements because even though I'm very comfortable and happy with what we have now, I've lived through nightmares in terms of how I've been treated by policemen and nothing happened. And even though things are okay now, I want to make sure that we put everything in place we can for the future so that if things aren't right, we have some written guidelines that will basically give us some boundaries that people are supposed to at least function within.
So Eleanor, I know that you mentioned that if there's disagreement, I mean, that's the question, when there's disagreement. So what happens, there's disagreement? It comes to the council, and it comes to the council for what?
It's a public report that goes to the council, and then where the...
We just accept it.
Where the council takes it from there is up to the council.
It's part of the consent agenda. One vote. We never even look at it.
We can always pull it out. You know that.
We can pull it out.
Yeah, I know you can, but we haven't done this. And I don't see, when I sustain a complaint on the, like, when I was on the police review board, we sustain a complaint, and it comes to the council without even the council talk about it. And this is last year. You guys been here.
Let me tell you what my concern is, and I'm curious about how each of the three parties reacts. I remember when Eric Shaw was shot and killed by a police officer. It's 1996, and that's the reason the CPRB exists, because that event happened. And public, many members of the public did not trust the process that unfolded with regard to that particular event. I'm not claiming anything beyond that, but many people did not trust the process. And then I think about a worst-case scenario, and when I think about worst-case scenario in Iowa City, it's a Trayvon Martin-type thing, or it's a Michael Brown-type thing. A police officer kills accidentally or whatever, kills some member of the community, and then there's investigation, and the question becomes, will the public trust the results of the investigation? So what I'm wondering, and I really asked Chief Mathely and Eleanor this question, but in a sense it goes to y'all too. If an event like that happened, chief, what kind of process would you want to know is in place ahead of time so that the public will be able to trust the outcome of investigations?
So during an event like you're talking about where it's a use of force, lethal use of force, there's two processes that would be going, I usually say simultaneously, but truly the internal process lags behind the criminal process. So the first thing we would do in something like that is bring in an outside agency, generally the DCI, to say, "You investigate this, you're a third party, you take a look at it so it, even on appearance, doesn't look like we're policing our own." That's just good business and something that's serious where we're, you know, where there could be criminal charges. So we're not arresting our own. Not that we couldn't arrest our own, but it's just a cleaner process. Certainly if the officer's vindicated and it's an unfounded situation where the force was justified, that can not set well with folks, even if, you know, even if it's justified. Sometimes it's just not pretty. Behind that, we then do the internal investigation. Now, that may be through the CPRB, it may be through, like Mazahar said, an internal process where somebody made a complaint with us. In that case, we would do it anyway, even without somebody complaining because it's a use of force that's of such a nature that we need to take an internal review of that. So we would be on autopilot to do that. But we ride behind the criminal investigation for many legal and logistical reasons, but that takes priority, and then we do ours. The officer could plead the Fifth Amendment on a statement to DCI under criminal investigation, but he'd have to talk to me under Garrity for an internal investigation. So I may very well know more about the incident than the DCI does as far as the officer who's suspected of, you know, who had to commit this act. But I can't use that Garrity statement internally on a criminal nature. So that's why we stay behind it, if that makes sense. So, you know, there are checks and balances. There has to be a level of trust to some extent on the internal side to say, you know, "Did we do this right?" At the end of the day, my job description says I don't only plan and coordinate the police department, but I have to evaluate it, I have to review performance, and I have to make sure that we're, and I say "we," the officers, including myself, are abiding by all the rules, literally hundreds if not thousands of rules that we have. That's my job. And if I don't do that appropriately, I don't like to hear that the council's powerless. You guys have all the power in the world to your city manager to take care of business with me if I'm not doing my job, if it's recognized, and you find out that this isn't, we're seeing things and it shouldn't be happening, and you're not doing anything about it. I've got to answer to somebody. My job description demands that. That's why I was hired. with me if I'm not doing my job, if it's recognized, and you find out that this isn't, we're seeing things and it shouldn't be happening, and you're not doing anything about it. I've got to answer to somebody, my job description demands that. That's why I was hired. So I don't want, you know, to anybody feel like they're a rubber stamp, I don't want them to feel like the process isn't in place. You know, there's thousands of police departments out there, we're an accredited agency because we do things right, we have checks and balances in place. This particular committee is more involved than, since I've been here, on keeping a good eye on our policy, why'd you make this change? They just asked for one of my investigators to come in last week, last meeting, and explain one of the policies, said, hey, can you come in and talk? We're very interested in why that is. And so we did that. I think it was very good on everybody's part that they had a full understanding and took the time to do that. So those processes are getting much, much better. There's work to do, but I think, I think there's a process in place without violating peace officer bill of rights, Garrity, you know, all these, this case law that has to do with due process and labor and union contracts, that we still have a set of eyes on this, that it's still made public, and that they can say, we disagree, and somebody might want to take a look at this, and the boss sits right here to my left on your right, that has the power to absolutely call me in and talk to me about it. And so there is something that can be done. Don't anybody feel powerless on processes. This is simply to bring it in a transparent manner to the public, so those decisions can be made in a transparent way.
To Mazahar's point, though, what I'm wondering is, we get it on the consent agenda, we have essentially two points of view, your view and then the board's view. It comes before us, what is the remedy that we have in that context? What do we do? I mean, because I think to your point, you know, there's this sort of principle, like you can't have a right without a remedy. If it comes before us, what are we authorized to do? And we can't sanction the officer, can we? We can't, that would be probably part of the labor contract. So what can we actually do?
No, you don't have disciplinary authority, but, well, number one, you can have a discussion about it.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I think you can talk about what the report says, you can ask the city manager and the police chief questions about why did you see it this way, and why did the CPRB see it this way? And frankly, if they had had a conversation about it, that would be a helpful thing for you to know. And so while you don't have disciplinary authority, you certainly have the authority to ask for a policy review, or a policy change, or those kinds of things.
And if it's an egregious act, again, we'll have that criminal investigation going as well, likely by a third party, if it's truly a use of force, where, you know, fatality or something like that, a police shooting, police-involved shooting.
What I'm wondering too, and maybe this is an Eleanor question, I know, for example, let's say, for example, a city council member violated a city ordinance, I assume someone else would prosecute that, right? I mean, is there a process in place where if we need to appoint an outside entity, like the county attorney's office, to do an investigation or another entity? I know, like, for example, if they get in trouble, they have another sister county attorney's office investigate that. Is there that sort of process in place in our city, that if there was a disagreement, they go to an outside entity to conduct an internal review?
Yeah, well, that's happened before with human rights complaints. For instance, if we have a human rights complaint that's against a city employee or officer, we transfer it to the state. There was a time when gender identity was not part of the state code, and so if we got a gender identity complaint against one of our employees, then we would have to hire an outside investigator. So it doesn't happen very often, but we're certainly sensitive to it.
And if it's low-level, we certainly could ask an outside, the sheriff's office, for example, if it's, you know, if it's a city council person, it's a local ordinance, city ordinance thing where needs further investigation, we could call on mutual aid to say, you know, these are our bosses, can you take a look at this? So there's an unbiased lens looking at that. That's always possible, and I've done that before in the past.
So I'm not aware of any situations, at least in the last seven years, in which the CPRB has asked us, has submitted a report that differs from the chief's, and then asked us to look into it more carefully, which is pretty much what you were just pointing to as a possible approach in the case there's a conflict.
It is.
So maybe that's what we need, is for the board to know that it has the right to explicitly ask us as a full council to listen to both the chief and the CPRB, and to try to understand the differing recommendations, and then us make some kind of judgment about how to proceed. I need, I don't know about how the law works here.
Well, you could certainly put something formally in place. It kind of surprises me that that doesn't already exist. You get them in your packets, you read them.
Yeah, but I mean, to have the board explicitly ask us to convene this kind of joint discussion, instead of just saying, well, we disagree with the chief, there you are.
Well, if these changes are made, the police chief and the board would have already had a discussion.
But it could still differ at the end of that discussion. It could still differ between them.
Sure, they can make an explicit request, they can do all of it.
I did ask staff to submit to me, within the past 10 years, how many allegations, you know, were in disagreement, and there were three within the past 10 years. So I did review those. But again, I think, you know, as the mayor was just saying, if there's a way that, when that happens, when it comes to council and the consent, you know, calendar or whatever, that it is pulled, and that it is something that is specifically discussed, I guess my question at that point is, when it comes to council, aren't we just approving the minutes? Aren't we, we're not approving the decisions?
That's right, on the consent calendar, when it happens that way, yes.
So we're not making, so we're, I mean, who makes the final decision is the question? Right now, it's the chief?
Yeah, you still make a decision on the consent. When you accept it, you're accepting the report, I think. Just listening to the conversation, probably the first step is just for us as staff, not to place it on the consent agenda anymore. If a conversation is what is desired, we should put that on the regular agenda, and that forces you to have a conversation, and we'd be happy to do that. The other thing I just want to point out is, those reports are not just beneficial to the public and to the council, but they're beneficial to me, as the chief said. I have the responsibility of overseeing the police department, and when there are those disagreements, I sit down with the police chief, and we talk through them. Now, I usually know a little bit about the case, particularly these past few years, I've been participating in the officer interviews, but we sit down and we talk about that disagreement. And those discussions could lead to things that you or others in the community may not know about. It could be an emphasis on more training in a particular area, or maybe I'll ask for a policy review for items that I noticed. So just want to point that out, that those reports are, again, beneficial to the city manager's office.
Can I make a statement? Number 11, you know, we felt that, you know, that's something to guarantee that we're doing everything we can to, you know, make sure that the public is taken care of. You know, I've looked at that, and the more I look at it, I realize that it's kind of a double-edged sword. You know, it will give us what we want in terms of protecting the public, but it kind of puts you on real thin ice with the city in terms of all kind of legalities and everything else. We don't want to do that, you know. We've had good discussion here, and, you know, again, I would just really encourage you to put in the audience, you know, if we can have it so that the council not only appoints the board, but you're working with us, you know, we can solve a lot of these problems without, you know, discussion like this. That's why I feel that it'd be very healthy if we had a couple liaisons from the city council that met with the board twice a year. That's when we could express concerns, and it could be brought back to you guys, and things could be changed and stuff like that. I think that would be a beginning.
When I look at, when I look at what the CPRB has asked for, and look at the staff recommendations, I've tried to read through these one-to-one, two-to-two, et cetera, to really kind of go through the detail. And so when I've looked at these, I didn't see any problems with the first 10, and staff didn't either. Obviously, a number of them were just renumbering of paragraphs once some other changes were made. When I get to 11, and I read through what the CPRB has asked for, and before even, when I read this a few months ago, one of the things that first popped up in my mind is, was the concern, and this came from staff as well, the idea of doing an independent investigation after the board has issued a public report. To me, that's not logical. Just from the standpoint, I would hope that the board would want to make sure that they have all of the facts in front of them before they issued any kind of public report. So if there's any hesitancy on the board's part that, of whether or not they have all the facts, that they would ask for that independent investigator upfront, as the board is currently allowed to. So that, you know, before that report comes out public, that you have, that you're sure that you have all the facts, that if there's anything that the police chief has provided you in his report that you're not comfortable with, or questioning whether it's complete or anything else, that the board would in fact say, wait a minute, we want, we need to stop a second, we need to get an independent investigator, make sure we have all the facts. Since the board hasn't ever done that, I'm making the assumption that the board has been comfortable that they do have all the facts in front of them. And certainly now with the body cams, I would hope that that has facilitated having a lot of those facts in front of you. So I was really concerned, because I think once you get the public report out there, it almost looks like you're putting, you know, the horse before, the cart before the horse, in terms of issuing a report, and then saying, oh, wait a minute, now we need to go get some facts, or get some more facts. So that was my concern there. There were certain other issues in there that I particularly had about the independent investigator commenting in terms of discipline. I'm not sure that any independent investigator, if they're even in an initial stage, if they are the appropriate person to be talking about discipline. To me, that independent investigator is to get the facts, so the board, you know, can make their determination of whether it was sustained or not. I'm not sure on a legal or policy aspect, I think that almost comes back almost on a political standpoint. If, and Eleanor, and the police chief and Jeff would have to kind of address this, is, you know, who knows, when you get into personnel issues, who knows what was done and what ramifications there were against that particular officer if those charges were sustained? And so, you know, looking at what was done, and probably that comes back to the city manager's lap in terms of, you know, knowing what was done, and whether or not he feels that what the chief did was appropriate, because that's protected under state law. Am I correct in that, Eleanor, in terms of any, what's the word I'm missing for? Any discipline that is required, or is any discipline that the chief might put forth on an officer is never going to become public? It is? It could if there was an appeal by the police officer to the civil service commission. Okay. But unless that happened, it would not become public, is that correct? Or at least, the city would not be releasing that information, is that fair? We would not. There is some case law that suggests that in some circumstances, the public interest might trump the personnel privacy issues. Okay. So without spending a whole lot more time on this, I am very comfortable with everything that the CPRB has asked for, except number 11, and I would also support what the staff has recommended in terms of adding, taking the city manager out of all those meetings, but certainly making the city manager available if the CPRB were to request, Mr. President.
Susan, I hear what you're saying, and in terms of the system and legalities, it'd make a lot of sense. But can you share with me, can you tell me, how do we handle it when there's a situation, a chronic situation, and a majority of your police review board feel that a citizen has been treated extremely unfair, even after the city council has looked at the material and disagreed with the police chief?
I think in those cases, what needs to happen is, what has not happened, is for the board to maybe specifically ask us to discuss it. If you feel like the council has been burying it in the consent agenda, as Jeff said, one quick and easy way is to take it out of the consent agenda. And for, and then at that point, if it's not on the consent agenda, for the board members to come to the meeting at which it is on our agenda, and we always allow the public to speak on any agenda item that is on. And so that way, basically to force the council, whether it's this council or a council in five years or 10 years, to actually publicly engage in a conversation about that particular report, and why you as board members feel that, you know, your decision and the chief's decision don't jive. And I would hope, in adding that piece of having the board and the chief sit down together when there is a disagreement on whether the complaint is sustained or not, I'm hoping, I would hope that we would have even fewer of those in the future.
Okay, that, you know, like I say, we're not going to come to an agreement with this, because, you know, I know what can happen, I know what has happened, you know, and basically, I suggest that you leave the city manager in on all the meetings, because when we have a negative situation, and you got to remember, one of the mistakes people make is, when they make a decision, a lot of times they make it on how they feel about something. You know, it's like you guys, you may be doing a good job, you may really want to see positive things happening. But we haven't always had a city council that's positive like this. We haven't always had a police chief that's positive like this. And I just want you guys to think about that. Don't think about how you feel about it, try to think of what your citizens are going through.
Also, I just want to say that, I don't think, and maybe you can correct me, Eleanor, can they come and talk about this public here? I don't think so, because if I want to tell you why I disagree with the police chief, I have to tell you the story, I have to tell you what did I see on the camera that made me change my mind, what did I hear, what, you know, all these things. And I don't think we can't talk about case public like this, because all those like confidential material. I don't know, here's, I think the question is simple. Maybe we don't need to take the option of hiring outside investigator, I can agree with you for that, but what have we, what can we do if those two people did not agree? You know, what's the recommendation? If you don't like the independent investigator, okay, take it away and give us a solution. I guess those people, they need a solution, so they can see that they're doing really good job by coming every, like, every month and looking all those complaints, and look all the videos, hear all the audios. It take a lot of time to go through those, and after that, come and say this complaint is sustained, and the police chief said it's not sustained, and done. What can they do? That's the question.
If there were one of these big cases, could they, presumably, couldn't they refer it to, like, the DCI, if you had one of these major cases? Could they refer it to an outside entity? Or would there be any remedy that they would have? And I think the other question-
They, meaning the CPRB?
The CPRB, yes.
The DCI does criminal investigations, I don't think they would do a-
Is there any other state entity that they could review it to, certified agency for officers, or any other outside entity that would not be us?
I mean, there are independent investigators that just do that for a living. That's kind of what is envisioned, I think, in the, but I think the question is, it's not that, okay, you have a disagreement between the police chief and the CPRB as to a certain case. It's not that we think they're, that staff is saying there shouldn't be a discussion about that, a conversation about that, a community highlight of that, a putting it on the separate agenda. Staff just doesn't think that the investigation at that stage is a remedy for that problem. Investigation should come at the beginning. That's, I don't understand, that's what I don't get, is the facts are out there. It's not that, it's not usually that the police chief and the CPRB disagree on the facts. They disagree on how they-
Things has been handled.
See those facts, and how they perceive, and those are two good, I mean, different perspectives.
So Eleanor, I'll go back to a point Mazahar made. To what extent can we, could we, as a council, talk about a particular issue during a council meeting where we have a sustained, not sustained kind of conflict between the department and-
The board puts a summary of the facts in their report.
We're currently, when we get that, it's the meeting minutes, and it doesn't have names or any sort of personal information, but kind of in regards to that, though, Eleanor, could we call for, would it be appropriate to call for a closed session if it was personal information that needed to be discussed, and would be between the CPRB and the council?
You don't have disciplinary authority over the officer.
Right.
And that's why you go into closed session, so probably not.
Okay.
You have-
You have disciplinary authority over the city manager. If you thought that somehow the city manager had mishandled this particular situation, you could go into closed session and talk about that.
Well, I think one thing, you know, it's like, and maybe I'm missing something, but when the board, when we, you know, sent our report to the city council, we don't hear anything back. You know, so you're talking about getting investigator, I mean, and this is what I mean about us, personally, I feel like a rubber stamp. I mean, you know, we go to all the problem, trouble of reviewing the tapes, getting all the information, then we meet and we discuss it, we set the level, we discuss it, and then we finally, you know, come to an agreement, we write the report, and we send it to the city council. Now, basically, maybe I'm wrong, but we don't hear anything back, you know?
And what I'm saying, I understand that perspective. I'm just saying that I think the remedy for that is not an investigation. It's to call it out as a separate agenda item, as Jeff has suggested, not just, you understand how the consent calendar works? So when they say the consent calendar, it's just a bunch of kind of routine items, and because this is an acceptance of a report, that's where it has landed in the past.
And I'm saying that we can't really say we want to get an investigation, that we don't know what the final outcome of the council's decision on it.
But, but to me, an investigation is to get the facts, and you should have, the board should have the facts before they come to a conclusion and write a report. I guess I'm on the same page with Eleanor. I don't see what an investigation is going to do after you already have the facts.
That's the double-edged sword that I was talking about. That's why I say I'm willing to back off on that, but I do-
But you have, but you have the police chief's report before you give your report. So you, you know what his conclusion is.
Yes.
And so if you've watched the body cam and you've, and any other information, and you've read the, and read the chief's report, and you have any question about that, then it would seem to me that that is the time for the board to request that outside investigator is before you issue a report.
I don't know, but I'm sorry, Oliver, but I want to ask, I don't know if Suzanne really get what you asking for. Here, we already say, they already received the report from the police chief. They went and they were investigating themselves, and they find out that they don't agree with the police chief.
Then hire an investigator before they issue their report.
But what you mean? But that's what they asking for, to hire an investigator?
No, they're asking for it after, after they've already issued the report.
That's what I told you. They find out, they disagree with, and they have the report, the report that they disagree.
No. How can you disagree if you don't have all the facts in front of you?
No, they are not asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, you are not asking for the investigation because you don't have all the facts. You have all the facts, you found out this complaint is sustained, but because you are disagree with the police, you need somebody independent who like neutral person to investigate this and to see if he come up with the information, with the police chief or with them, so they can-
But what is the investigator doing if, if you, if you say that everybody already has the facts, then what is that investigator doing?
All right, I'm with you until here. Okay, everybody have the fact, what next? They saying this sustained, and he's saying it's not sustained, what next? And I am as a citizen who file a complaint with the police review, what I'm getting? What I'm getting?
But what is the investigator doing, just giving a third perspective?
Sure, just don't, don't bring the investigation. Let us just assume we are not asking, they are not asking for that.
Could the city council request a-
Can we do that?
A follow-up investigation? In other words, if we pull an item out of the consent calendar because there's been this non-sustained kind of finding, and we discuss it, could we then decide that we need to hire as an independent investigator because we think there's something about the situation that requires that kind of additional review?
But my, my question still comes back to the fact. What are you asking an investigator to do?
I don't know, because I'm-
Let me just finish, please. Let me just finish, please. Because typically, when I think of an outside investigator, when you say investigate, an investigator is looking for information and facts to, to help people make a decision. If the board and the chief agree on the facts but have a different perspective, okay? We can all see the same set of facts and have different opinions or perspectives about what those facts mean or how those facts should be judged. My perception is that is, is what is going on, is that the board, where there are disagreements, is that the board and the chief have, I've never heard that they don't feel they have the same set of facts, but they're coming at it from different viewpoints, different perspectives. And the chief is saying, based on his experience in law enforcement and the training, et cetera, that he feels that the officer's behavior was appropriate and that the complaint is not sustained. And the board, coming at it from their perspective, is saying, no, an officer should not have behaved this way. And so they are sustaining that complaint. So if they're operating from the same set of facts, but it's different perspectives that get them to that sustained versus unsustained conclusion-
Not all of them have the same fact.
What is an outside, what is an, well, then the, if they don't all have the same facts, then I would still go back to saying, the board has the police, has the police chief's report before they, before they give their report. So as they're doing their investigation, if they don't believe they're going to reach the same conclusion that the police, the police chief does, and they believe they're not going to reach the same conclusion because of lack of facts, then they should call for an investigation at that point in time, not after they have publicly done a report.
Okay, I'm worried that we're going to keep going over this same terrain over and over again. We've been doing it for about an hour now. So, and it's important, but go ahead.
I'm sorry, if I may, we, I feel like we as a, as a police board have been kind of spinning our wheels on this since like early 2017. And so I think at least as a baseline, the suggestion of removing it from the consent calendar, having it as a separate item, having the city council go over that, that's at least a starting point, that's, puts us closer, you know, enters us a little bit out of that spinning of our wheels. So that's a great starting point. And so I know we're still kind of going back and forth about the investigator, but at least pulling it out of the consent agenda is recommended.
Thank you, Manika. I was going to suggest, but thank you. I'd like to make one other suggestion, and that is if the board feels very strongly about the finding of not sustained, we need to know that, you know, because that will help us review the situation better.
What about the twice a year? Did we decide we wanted to do that?
Well, let's see if we've got this decided first, okay? So-
Go ahead, that's kind of where I was going.
Yeah, so are you in agreement that we should have, add this, I don't know, additional layer where basically we pull any item that's not sustained, we pull it out of the consent calendar and have it as a separate formal meeting agenda item?
Yes.
And that the board is totally invited, et cetera, to present the rationale for its disagreement with the, with the chief and vice versa?
Yes.
Are we in agreement with that?
Okay, but do we have a plan? What are we going to do after that?
I want to know about this part first.
Also, I want to know if we have, we're going to have a plan, so I can say yes or no. Why are we doing this?
To provide an additional public review, layer of review of the fact that there's disagreement. That in itself is important.
Okay.
And that the board then would have the opportunity to be clear with us, and we'd have a chance to talk about it, and maybe help the board understand why we are going to support the chief's recommendation, or vice versa.
Sounds reasonable to me.
I mean, that's, seems to me that that's what, what's involved. Okay, so I think we're okay, we're okay with that part of it, huh?
It's okay?
Do we get to meet twice a year and we get rid-
We haven't gotten that yet. Yeah. Just one second.
So is that the one, the point you-
Yeah, I was going to bring up that point.
Yeah, so-
I'm sorry, before we get to that, can we talk about the other piece about the manager's participation? Because that was in there, in the staffs.
Yeah, so the staff recommends that the city manager not attend every such meeting, but I think there's some exception.
Well, we're talking about two different meetings. We're talking about currently the, or the ordinance requires that the board, or that the city manager attend the interview with the police officer.
Okay.
Okay. And so that's, that's where staff is suggesting we, we stop that, but we include, we include the ability of the board to ask for the city manager's participation if there's disagreement between the board and the police chief.
Okay, I see Orville shaking his head. Explain, please, why you don't think that's a good idea.
Well, a while back, we, we suggested that that happened, you know, because it means that you've got, you've got, the more people you have in terms of visibility, you know, and if, and the city manager being put at a process, you know, we feel that that, it kind of strengthen the process.
So he's in, so you're in agreement that the city manager would attend the CPRB when there's a disagreement at the request of the-
We're talking about the interviews.
Maybe I can, maybe I can clarify this a little bit. Currently, I sit in on the officer interviews, and that's it. That's the only part of the investigation that I'm, I'm involved in. So if there's witness-
For any, any such situation?
Correct. If there's witness interviews, if there are interviews with the complainant, I'm not involved in any of those. I get, I get brought into the interviews with our officers that are involved in the complaint. And then I do not also attend the CPRB meeting, so I don't have any involvement in the process except for those officer interviews. Now, I don't feel very strongly about this item. If, if the public and the council feels better by having me continue, that's fine. I can say the reality is, I review these instant, these, these cases holistically at the end anyway, okay? So I take a look at all the information, I sit down, we, I discuss him with the chief, I discuss his findings, I discuss the CPRB findings with the chief. So it's not like I'm removed from the process with this recommendation. But, but that said, if, if the council and if the public feels strongly that they want me to continue to be scheduled in on these officer interviews, that's fine. I just have not seen the value in that in my, my two years.
Can you estimate how many such interviews you've sat in on, in on over the past year?
Well, I don't know how many complaints we've had. I mean, the complaints are only half a dozen a year, and there's usually one officer interview associated. Sometimes there might be a couple officer interviews. So it's not a, a huge commitment of time. As I, or as Eleanor noted in the memo after talking with me, one of the challenges is just scheduling. So the, the police gets the complaint, they want to schedule the officer, the officer maybe working the night shift, and I've got a busy schedule. We got to get the super, the investigation team, which is usually two or three supervisors, you got to get the officer, and you got to get my schedule aligned. So it can slow things down. Obviously, we're still cranking these, through these, so it's not, again, not a huge deal.
And let me add, under the piece Officer Bill writes, we have to record those interviews anyway. So he would have the luxury of not just my synopsis and holistically looking at it, but listening to the interview itself, and if he feels it fell short, we could certainly go back and do more on the interview. There's nothing that prohibits that.
Just from hearing everything that's been said about this part, I would probably suggest that, or be in support of the city manager attending the CPRB when there is a dispute between the findings. To sit in each one of those, I think, at that point, if it comes back to there's a difference in opinion, well, he's already been exposed to that interview process, which could lead to some biases or something like that. But I think it would be much cleaner if there was a dispute that he attend one of the CPRBs when there's a dispute.
Can the board know in advance whether it would be good to have the city manager present for such interviews?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah. Let's say there are like six or eight interviews that might occur during a particular year. Would the board know ahead of time whether it's important for the city manager to be present for one or two or whatever of those interviews?
I think that's, if I can just enter, I think that's probably unlikely because the complaint goes directly to the police chief for the, for the investigation first. The board doesn't analyze it until they get the police chief's report. So I would say probably no.
So council members, do you have an opinion about this in terms of whether Jeff should be present for these interviews?
I like giving Jeff the discrep, excuse me, I like giving Jeff the discretion, which I understand is consistent with the recommendation. So I would leave it to the discretion of the city manager.
I agree with what Bruce had said as far as having him, and if there, when there is a disagreement and sort of serving as a mediator type person rather than, and if he did need to listen to the interviews, as, as the chief said, they are taped, and he could, he could review those rather than sitting in on all of them.
But Oliver, how helpful is that for you if he sit for the interview between the officer and the police chief?
Well, I think basically just, just being a citizen is a safeguard. You know, I mean, you know, like I told you, I tried to be honest with you upfront. My reactions don't have, don't have any very much to do with the present. My reactions are a result of the past and what can happen in the future if we end up with a police chief that feels like I got to protect my boys in blue.
I'm going to agree with Orville on this. How about the rest of you?
I do.
One?
Two.
So we're agreeing that, I mean, you're asking if we would require the city manager to sit in on every-
As is currently being done.
Yes.
And let me just, for, for those of you that haven't responded, I don't want this to be a divisive issue. This doesn't need to be a divisive issue. And I think if there's not the comfort level at the council level, and there's not the comfort level at the CPRB, then let's just keep the status quo. Again, maybe, maybe we revisit it down the road further, but it's more important that people are comfortable with the process than whether I've got to work through scheduling six times or seven times a year.
Okay, are we agreeable with that?
Yes.
That's fine.
So do you also, though, want to add to the ordinance that the CPRB can request the city manager's attendance at the meeting with the police chief if there's a disagreement? I assume, add that as well.
I would think that'd be a good thing.
Okay.
All right, so the last component.
You just, you know, in our fairness to Jeff, you might add that, you know, we, one of the new changes that we're requesting is that we meet with the police chief if there's a disagreement. So once that ends, so I don't think we want Jeff, the city manager to be at all the time, but I think if we have a situation where we disagree and there's some strong feelings about it, then, you know, the, the board should have the right to request that the city manager sit in. That way, we're not monopolizing his time.
Sure.
That's how I understand it.
So the board would be able to waive it if necessary.
Okay. So the last point is, has to do with Orville's suggestion that we assign two council members to meet with the board twice a year?
Is this something the board has discussed at all, or?
Yeah, is it a board recommendation, Orville, or just you?
No, 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 no. It's just basically, as I thought about it, you know, in terms, it's, it's something that in terms of, you know, I, I feel you guys appoint, you appoint us, but that's it, you know? And you really don't get much communication from us, you get a report. And I think basically in terms of us, just like we're requesting a change in ordinance right now, and we're discussing it here, I think we'll come out of lots better that way because it'll avoid us having the discussion that we had tonight.
I don't disagree, but I do think something like this should come from the board, the request should come from the board as a whole.
I agree.
Not just one member.
Yeah, so please ask your fellow board members to discuss it.
We'll take it back, Tom.
I would know if it wants it comes back, I would agree with it.
Yeah, we'll support it if it comes back. Okay. Thank you so much for coming.
Jim?
Thanks for your time.
I just think you guys ought to get a cheaper raise, okay?
I'll add just one more thing. I think just listening to the conversation, it'd be helpful that now that the items, where there's disagreement, we'll go on the regular agenda. What we should do is get the council meeting transcripts and put those in the CPRB packets so those members that could not attend can, can at least read the council deliberation on the matter.
Okay. All right, we should move on, and we have less, you know, 25 minutes, something like that? We should move on to our next topic, which is the solar feasibility study. And what we want to do is revisit some of our discussion from the meeting two times ago. So Ashley, could you briefly summarize the memo for the benefit of anybody watching this on TV?
Yes.
And others?
Sure. So in our most recent information packet, we put out a, like a follow-up memo for the solar feasibility study. Bluestem came to present their recommendations at the December 4th meeting. Blue Stem came to present their recommendations at the December 4th meeting, and council had some discussion, which led us to do a little bit more, I guess, an analysis of the scenario two from Blue Stem in their recommendations. So that included a recommendation for solar photovoltaics at our Mercer Scanlon facility, the Robert A. Lee Recreation Center, and the wastewater treatment facility. So in this particular memo, though, we removed the wastewater treatment plant from that scenario with the rationale that we're planning or proposing in the fiscal year 20 budget that there will be some type of study that assesses the methane generated at the facility and other operational needs there, which may help alleviate some of the greenhouse gas emissions and energy usage that we have currently at the plant. There was discussion at the council meeting about the proposal for a system at Terry True Blood Recreation Center, so we added that to this scenario. And really, we just summarized that with the, with the estimated cost of what that system might encompass, that the maximum amount of solar that, that the consultant recommended, as well as the payback for that. So further in the memo, we assessed the, the data for our facility emissions, greenhouse gas emissions. There was some question about that during our, our discussion. So we did, did include a, a chart for our municipal facilities' energy usage. So in those facilities, like Mercer and the Recreation Center, we included that as, you know, what percentage of our municipal emissions at our facilities are generated by those two facilities, just so you could see kind of an offset of what that could look like, or a portion of that with the solar recommended by Blue Stem. We also note the, the Recreation Center's reconstruction and the potential for reconstruction. We were assessing the feasibility of adding onto that facility with OPN, the architects that are doing the renovations there for the gymnasium, the racquetball court area. And their conclusion was that it wouldn't necessarily be possible to build up at the Recreation Center as it is currently. That's why we, they were thinking to move out. And so when the Blue Stem did the solar study, that wasn't a consideration when they were looking at the facility. So their, their recommendations at the Recreation Center downtown includes all of that roof availability, which we may not feel, feel great about. That's for you to determine. The other thing is our Public Works Facility that's being built. We noted, basically repeated that information, that we're prepared to include funding for a solar voltaic system on the rooftop at the new facility, and so we're prepared to work through those things with the architects there. And finally, we looked at a couple of, you know, we're not sure what the energy rates will look like over the span of time that a solar fixture might be in place. It could be good, it could be not, not great in terms of the return on what we're investing cost-wise. The renewables, as the community increases our renewable energy generation, the value of greenhouse gas emissions and the decrease will, will, you know, be less. Finally, we talked to Mid-American and Eastern Iowa and Power. Both of them reached out to us as a result of the study. So I think the lines of communication are open for us to further discuss what, what our options might be if we don't choose to put as much solar out, or, or all of the solar as recommended by the consultant. So we gave council some options for proceeding. We can do some combination of what this looks like, either to move forward with the plans at the Public Works Facility. It's, you know, up to you to, to determine. But we also can utilize the public education materials that they included in their report. There was some value there. We could also bring the study results to the Climate Action Advisory Board, our committee in the public, to identify how the city could prioritize any of the other projects. We have some very technically savvy people on that, on that board, and they may offer some opinions. And then the other option, the major option, would be to pursue our, the work at the Public Works Facility and other options, which could include one or more of the recommendations from Blue Stem. It could be a partnership with one or more of our energy providers, so looking forward to a partnership or some kind of project that we might be able to work on. And then just further implementing our energy efficiency projects around the community. So looking at our climate action plan, looking at our facilities plan, our CIP, and investing in those ways to, to reduce emissions and cost.
When I looked-
Thank you.
When I looked at these, the options for proceeding, I was kind of interested in a mix-and-match approach. I think we should always be considering other options. I think, I don't think we want to rely just on solar, and so, and I think we definitely should have, have meetings and conversations with our energy providers about what kind of partnerships they might be interested in and how that might be beneficial to us both financially and also in terms of improving our reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. But I also want to make sure we don't overlook the, the expertise and, and the usage of our Climate Action Advisory Board. I would certainly like to, for us to look at keeping them involved and prior, helping prioritize maybe some of the other projects that we might want to be looking at. So I, I think it's important, we, we asked them to do an awful lot at the front end. I think when they got done and did their report, there, I heard a number of them say, kind of like, "We want to stay involved, don't, please don't just dump us," you know, now. And so I think this would be a great way to keep them involved in terms of, as you said, there's a lot of technical expertise there, and maybe have them doing some of the evaluation and giving us their priorities on some of, whether it's the other PV projects and/or other projects that we should consider doing, and then we could look at that analysis.
I, I agree with Susan. I think solar just seems to be a small piece of the puzzle as far as the energy efficiency. And I believe that committee did have a large array, a very diverse approach to energy efficiency and, and emission reductions. And I think that's the bigger part. And of course, we, as a city, can be a role model and, and do the solar projects, because of course, the county's already taken the lead on that. But, so I think with the wastewater or the Public Works Facility is, is very visible, and, and it's already plans for construction and plans for solar feasibility of that. So I think that's an excellent place to start, and so kind of along with that and the mix-and-match approach, I think Terry True Blood would make sense, since it's right across the way from there to, to do that also then, and that, that's my opinion.
So I'm, I want to agree in part with what both of you said. My own personal sense is that we ought to tell the staff we want to proceed with the Public Works Facility.
I want numbers first. We haven't seen dollars for that yet in terms of the design and-
I know, I know. All this is going to end up in, in our budget discussions, I understand that. But basically, with regard to the question at hand, proceed with the, the Public Works PV array. I really like the idea of doing the True Blood Park project, which seemed to be very small and has a very good financial payback. I really like the idea of asking the advisory board to review the solar feasibility study and relate it to our climate action plan and help us prioritize so, so that they can, you know, put their expertise to bear on that particular question. And I really like the idea of installing, not installing, well, I'll use the verb installing, installing some public education components at either True Blood or the Public Works Facility. And when I say public education stuff, I mean some of the material that's described at the end of the consultant's report. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
I agree. I would just want to emphasize, I think the, the role of the Climate Action Advisory Board is really, I think, a valuable piece of this, and I, you know, I'd be interested in their, their thoughts regarding, you know, the, the Public Works Facility as well. I mean, we're talking about moving forward with it, but there's a lot of question as to what, what, what does that mean? So I think the only, yeah, and I think True Blood sounds like a promising project, but again, you know, let's, let's evaluate it further in terms of the, how it fits into that bigger picture, which I think, you know, the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan speak to me about the, like, like with the Bike Master Plan, the complexities of making priorities. And that's where I think the advisory group, as well as staff, should be helpful in terms of understanding what makes the most sense, given all things considered.
I, I really also agree with everything that you said and everybody said, but I really want to see the public work, well, you know, facility also have the same thing, especially this is a new building, and we want to see like solar on that building just, just to start with, and I guess it would be really great if we can do that.
I guess for my purposes, I'd like to provide a little bit of background. My recollection of this process in terms of how we started is that what we're trying to do is match council's vision and at the same time deferring to our staff's expertise. And my recollection of the direction that was given to staff about a year ago, if I'm not incorrect, is that we asked them for their recommendation as to three projects specifically, which in their judgment, they thought would be the best and most suited for solar adaptation. That's my recollection. And then as part of that process and consideration, we've received this very detailed study from Blue Stem, which does, in my view, have virtually all the information we need in terms of budget, in terms of projected greenhouse gas emissions, in terms of complexity, in terms of solar installation. I mean, these were engineers doing the work. So what I would like to do is do a little bit of a balance in terms of, at the same time, we want to give the staff the discretion to sort of move forward, but I would like to be more clear in terms of the direction. I think we should begin planning for Public Works Facility, and by planning, I'd mean that during our upcoming budget review session, hopefully we could be in the process of getting some estimates in terms of what that would cost. Obviously, if we change our mind and we get sticker shock, we can always change our mind at that point. With Terry True Blood, my view is I think we should begin forward, planning for that immediately in terms of planning on that. In terms of price, we're not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. It's my understanding we're talking about under $75,000 for purposes of installation. Staff has talked about feasibility and education in terms of highlighting it. I think this particular project has the greatest payback. We know that already from the study. In terms of education, visibility, it does that, and so I think we can get that movement. So again, I think I do want to feel a little bit more urgency from that. What I'd also like to do is be more specific about Mercer. I would like the Climate Action Committee to evaluate and assess the third-party purchase agreement concept. I do think that we've given that short thrift. We've received numerous recommendations in terms of the value, the cost benefits because of the 30% tax reduction on this. So I think we need to move forward on that, and so I would at least like to see more clear direction on that. You know, we did try to give flexibility, but I, I've not seen any specific recommendations. And I, I think, I do have concerns about kicking it to another committee, albeit one with a lot of knowledge. I think they should have been brought in at an earlier stage, and we, we just need to feel a little bit greater sense of urgency on this question. So I think True Blood, hopefully we can get direction tonight, hopefully four votes to move forward on True Blood. I think that it would be the perfect candidate to get started.
I'm willing to agree with that because I've already laid out several components that I think would be appropriate, and they combine the Public Works Facility, True Blood, which is a really quite an inexpensive project, basically, and the public education piece, and seeking advice from the advisory committee about how any further solar installations fit into the broad picture of our climate action plan. So I think that's a pretty good combination to do those four things. Are we okay with that?
No.
I'm seeing like four or five nods here, and I'll nod too. Okay, any further discussion about this? Are we clear?
If I can just mention one thing on the Public Works Facility, just so you know how that's going to come to you. We have, we have, have a placeholder in the budget, a very conservative placeholder in the budget, because that system's still under design and those costs are still being evaluated. We're probably still evaluating whether it's a purchase or power purchase arrangement. So what you'll see in the budget recommendation that comes out is just that placeholder. Ultimately, it's going to be, it's, it's a significant project, hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is a big array. That decision will come before you, so you will still have that check. And if you get uncomfortable with the numbers, whether it's emission reductions or cost, ultimately, it'll be your, your final call, whether to pull the trigger on that, on that project. And if you decide not to, those budget dollars just remain unallocated. You can shift them somewhere else, or we just, you know, don't issue the bonds, or whatever, you know, that's a decision down the road.
Okay, good deal. I'd like to bring up one last point, which is not directly relevant to the question at hand, but it, it does address the topic in general. Ashley's memo notes that I had made a recommendation that we incorporate what's called the shadow price of carbon into our payback and return on investment calculations. Shadow price is a sort of a term of art. It refers to social costs or negative externalities in terms of economics associated with any particular project. So it turns out that there, a bill has been introduced in Congress that is consistent with a resolution that we adopted back in, I don't know, February or something like that, expressing support for a carbon fee and dividend approach. The carbon fee that is proposed in this bill, that is a bipartisan bill that's been introduced in Congress, would start with a $15 per ton of carbon emissions fee and then increase annually. I don't, I don't know what the bill says about increasing annually, but I know it does increase. According to the original proposal, it would increase by $10 per year. So it would go from $15 per ton to $25 per ton to $35 per ton and so on, and therefore put increasing market pressure on any activity that's heavily based on carbon-based fuels. The dividend part is, would return the money to householders. So it, it's a way of getting into our minds the actual cost of using carbon-based fuels. It's far more costly than just looking at dollars and cents would indicate. And that's because climate change is the biggest negative externality there is. So I just wanted to make sure you kind of knew that background. Okay, can we move on? We got maybe 10 minutes, I guess? Move on to clarification of agenda items? Thank you, Chief. See you. I wonder about item 8A, which is a series of communications having to do with ped mall benches?
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, so this is clearly a topic that's gotten a lot of attention, and I totally understand why attention's been drawn to it. I can tell you, I went over and sat down and, in the benches today to make sure I knew what they all felt like. There are actually four different kinds of benches out there that I saw and sat in. And I understand the point about homeless people needing a place to sleep. But we've been doing a lot over the past, how many years? I don't know, four or five years, to change the situation, the, the way homeless people are treated in our city. And I, I think it's really important that, that people know that we have been providing all of our officers with crisis intervention training so that they know how to respond to homeless people or others who are stressed for one reason or another, that we have an officer in the downtown area who is assigned to work with homeless people and others, so they develop relationships and treat homeless people with respect rather than whatever they otherwise might be treated with, that we've been in, helping- they otherwise might be treated with, that we've been helping the siding and construction of the Housing First Facility, that Shelter House is providing, that we're investing in a behavioral health access center and enabling it to happen by rezoning, et cetera, all of which has in part to do with homeless people and ensuring that they have adequate shelter, even though they might have had too much to drink, or be on drugs, or something, they still would have access to shelter, which is the crucial point about Housing First. So anyhow, I'm just very conscious of all that and feel a need to express it. I don't know if any of the rest of you have anything to say about item 8A?
One thing, go ahead, go ahead.
I really, I agree with you, you know, Jim. You know, the council has been doing a lot to end the homelessness thing. But you know, I really, I start hearing people say it's good benches, they like it the way it is. I start hearing another people who's saying, no, it's not good, we need to have, you know, some of them without the armrests. But you know, since we have like, people in the community have debate on this, let us, you know, I really want to suggest to the council, if we can do some of them with hand, you know, the handrest, some of them with not, so we can satisfy everyone on this community. You know, that's my suggestion really, to the council, and I hope I can find somebody to agree.
The only thing I wanted to get related to that question, I'm sort of one step before. Could we get informa, because it's my understanding, staff has already ordered all of the benches as part of our current planning, is that correct? Or there are contracts that are signed?
The contract for the PedMall, although it's a two-year project, it was one contract. So, the contract's been issued, it had all the specs in it. I would assume that all the benches have been ordered even for the next phase. We would have to talk to the contractor and the manufacturer and get that information.
If it wouldn't be too much trouble in terms of getting that information, before we get to Maz's point, I would at least like to know what the cost to the city would be of a possible changing from 100%, where you can't lay down, to maybe 10% to 25%, somewhere around that range. Because setting aside the homeless issue, I do think that there is an issue about people just being able to lay down and read a book and enjoy the PedMall in that way. But I wouldn't necessarily want to do that if it were a exorbitant cost, or extremely difficult to do, or logistically impractical. So, what I was wondering is, is that if we could do a little tiny work session, maybe 10 minutes in about a month or so with staff, to be able to go and get additional information, and then we could at least get that information, and then get to Maz's question, in terms of possibly doing that 10% to 25% range?
Yeah, sorry, I smirked a little bit, because I don't know if it's possible to have a 10-minute work session on this topic.
Especially with this bunch, right?
I was gonna say, why not just a quick memo, to give us the cost and complexity?
We can put together some information. It's going to take a little bit of time to talk with the contractor and see exactly where things are. And I don't know that we can get a firm cost estimate real quick. We tried to ballpark what the estimate would be to take out all the benches that are even in, and buy new ones and put those in, basically to change the whole bench plan for the entire project, not just the yet-to-be-done. And it's probably about $400,000 is just our rough staff estimate. Very labor-intensive. If you see how those are being installed, they're being bolted to the subbase, and then the bricks are actually being cut individually and placed around the legs of them. So, it's a very labor-intensive process. And commercial benches like that meant for this type of wear and tear are expensive. But we'd have to explore how we can bring that cost down with some type of mixture, and we could work with, I could work with Ron and Scott Silver as the project engineer, and try to give you some rough ideas on what that might be.
I think it'd make a difference just to have, say, 10 benches where a person could lie down. And so, we don't need a work session, Rock. You just have a memo, and then people can talk about the memo.
Fair enough.
I mean, like Jim, I went out before the work session and sat on the benches and tried to get a sense of that. I think the existing benches are pretty comfortable. And then we have the two wood types. One is more kind of similar to the existing, has kind of a rounded shape to the back, which frankly, I didn't find as comfortable. But we've ordered them, so it's the same bench that's used on the Pinnacrest, I believe, around the Pinnacrest. But my feeling is, is that it's, the project's still unfinished, so it's, I think, a little bit premature to be overreacting to what exactly to do moving forward. But I do think there might be an opportunity, based on the community comment, for staff to look at how there can be adjustments. It looked to me like the mid-arm on those benches across from the play area, it's a very simple mount, it's underneath the seat. So, it doesn't look to be as difficult to, in other words, that bench looks like it easily could be adapted to, no mid-arm if we were to choose to do that.
You mean a two, one of the two-seater benches?
Yeah, I think it's only divided into two bays, so there's one mid-arm. So, I think there's opportunities for adjustment. I think, you know, I think there were some interesting comments. You know, the idea that the kids, for example, you know, they, you know, a parent with two children, it might be better not to have that mid-arm. Plus, people often like storing things on benches, you know, like putting things down next to them rather than on the ground. It's sort of a raised surface. So, I think all of those factors could be, at this point, maybe this is an opportunity with the phasing, we have kind of an opportunity to think about it. Given the resources we have, this, I don't, I'm not anticipating or suggesting changing out the number or the, you know, what it is we've already ordered, but refining the plan in some fashion.
That's what I would think too, and I appreciate the community concern about the homeless folks, but as Rockney and John has mentioned too, there are other populations that also the benches are a concern. And my particular concern as a nurse, and having treated a lot of these patients, are the larger patients that wouldn't be comfortable in the half-size. And if it wouldn't be too late for us to look at having, I would say even 30% of the benches being without the centerpiece would be acceptable, I believe.
I'm not interested, well, start back. We did a public input process before we did the whole PedMall design, and people had the opportunity, you know, to do that. And I realize, unfortunately, lots of times, public, and I'm guilty of this too, don't get involved until they see the results, okay? But having said that, I think, you know, particularly as Jeff said, they looked at changing at all, $400,000, I'm not interested in that at all. And I will say, one of the things that staff talked about was in those public input sessions and some of the things they were looking at was increasing the actual seating, the volume of seating, okay? And it's interesting, because I just came back, did a trip this last week, and both times going through the airports, what you see is exactly what you see in the parks. There were people sitting in virtually every other seat in the airport unless they were traveling together. People do not tend to sit next to strangers if they do not have to. It is just human nature. And so I think with those dividers, giving that perception of your own space, you know, I think that's what the intent was, and I think that's what it does. I spoke last time to the homeless issue. I think there's lots other bigger, more important issues in regard to the homeless that we are doing every effort to address. So, I'm fine with what Rockney has suggested, if staff can look and not spend too much time on what would it cost to change out a small percentage of the benches, and then we'll go from there.
Back to the homeless issue, I would like to maybe hear, I didn't get a chance, I was going to call Chrissy over at the Shelter House to hear her views on this, and if she has any idea of what the percentage, if there are a number of homeless.
She was quoted in the paper, saying that this is about the last thing on her radar, that she's concerned about finding homes for the homeless, and she does not see the benches as something that people should be focusing on.
Yeah, I called her also, and she said the same thing. She is, you know, really concerned, looking for players for homeless, not like, yeah, but this is now really, is up to us here. I'm really suggesting that we go with what Bolin said, 30% of the benches to be, figure out how much it's going to cost for 30%.
Well, let's not make a decision tonight, but Jeff, could you provide us with a memo? And you clearly hear a range of possibilities, and we'll have to address this sometime in the fairly near future, right?
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, good deal. So, I think we're done for the work session, so that we can just take a break and do whatever is necessary, and we'll revisit the, it could be that you want to ask questions about the agenda. But, you know, maybe you can just bring particular topics up after the agenda, after the formal meeting is over.
Sounds good to me.
So, we're going to take a break, we'll reconvene the work session after the formal meeting. Yep, and we'll pick up with continuing this clarification of agenda items, because maybe there's something you want to talk about that we won't really need to talk about during the formal meeting. So, of course, we've gone through the agenda now, but was there anything anybody wanted to bring up?
I did want to ask or request that staff send plans and specifications to the Friends of Hickory Hill Park for the Hickory Hill Project. Is that possible? Do you have plans? I'm assuming you have sets of bids that were awarded?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
John, you know, on that point, I just received a letter yesterday with some news that surprised me, but it's relevant to the Friends of Historic Preservation, and that is that Alicia Trimble has decided to move on. And I think that means they will be looking for a new director of Friends. And I got the letter from Generali Swaim. It was a fundraising letter from Generali. So, I didn't know that was in the works, but there it is. And if any, if Alicia's listening, or any of her friends, please convey to her mine, and I imagine the council's, thanks for her work over the years. All right, anything else on the?
I had another.
Agenda?
Another correspondence item, which didn't make it into our agenda, but there was correspondence between Rebecca Porter and Jeanne Park on Manville Heights.
I didn't see that. Where was that?
I think Jeanne's was distributed broadly, if I'm not mistaken, was it not?
In letters? No, it's not on any of the material we have before us.
Okay.
Must have just come, it came to me, maybe just, just you and I?
I thought Rebecca sent it only to you and I, but I thought Jeanne had sent. Can correspondence be spoken about at council then, if it's not distributed generally?
Well, it's not an item on the work session or formal meeting agenda. I don't know, it may be that that, it's an email?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe that, maybe it's in Kelly's inbox, sort of, and it'll appear in our next information packet?
I was, it was addressed to me, and there was a few neighbors on it, and I think one or two council members, but, and then I thought the second email, they just replied all. So, if it was distributed to a larger audience, I can double-check that.
Okay.
We generally, we generally put it in, I think if there's four, four or more council members?
Yeah, I thought it had reached more than two.
Anyway, I may have missed it, I'll double-check.
I had just a question on whether it might be a typo in 6C in the consent calendar, the landfill dual-extraction system. It's project estimated cost, project bid received, and then it said project annual cost, is that project actual cost instead of annual cost?
Should be actual, it sounds like.
Should be actual, shouldn't it?
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on the formal meeting agenda? If not, let's go to the information packets, December the 6th.
On IP4, which has to do with the collision data at Lynn and Washington, one, I just had one question, which was, and then a comment. In Table 1, it talks about ran off the road to the right, and I was kind of wondering what, what happened there?
Went up on the sidewalk.
I'd have to pull the.
Anyway, aside from that.
The driver's not here, John.
Interesting that somehow it got reported. I mean, it, maybe they ran into something and that was what generated the report, but I did, I did think it was interesting that collisions, at least for this two-year period since the stop signs went in, are down from three to one. So, it's going in the right direction since the change, and, you know, there was some concern by Mary Grabit about it's the risks there, and it, at least with respect to the collision data, there's less of a risk of collisions, and there were no pedestrian, I don't believe there was any, I'm not seeing it at the moment, but I don't believe pedestrians or bicyclists were involved in any of the collisions.
I mean, I'm very comfortable with what we've done there, and I think it's always, when you have stop signs versus stoplights, people do have to pay a little bit more attention in terms of who's going, whose turn it is, so to speak, because you don't have the actual lights. But the fact that every vehicle is coming to a stop, I think, makes sense, and I think it's working fine.
And to that point, that's one of those sort of counterintuitive things, that it's precisely people's perception of perhaps more danger, because there's not a light, that they're more aware of their surroundings, and that they're actually more active. So, that's not a coincidence that we're getting that lower number. So, I think, and major kudos to John, because I think you're one of the peoples that proposed, or persons that proposed that.
I want to make a suggestion. I'm conscious that Tracy is sitting out there, and she's the only staff person other than Simon is sitting out there, and you're only here for one topic, right? Can we jump to?
We should, yeah.
IP number nine, which is in the December 13th information packet, it's, it concerns the South District Home Ownership Program?
Yes.
Yeah, so, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Just to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so, one of the items on our work session agenda pending list is to, I don't know, fill out details concerning the South District Home Ownership Program, right? So, is staff thinking that this is more background information for us? What do you, what do you think?
Yeah, this is information that she requested. You asked us to go put this together. We thought we would put it in, in the off-chance, we could have a short conversation and move on with the program, because we've talked about it, but if a larger conversation needs to take place, well, we should probably schedule, we normally would have just scheduled it, but knowing we're going into budget, we thought work session time's going to be precious, and we'll try to get it done tonight.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I have one quick reaction, and I talked with Maz about this on the phone a little bit. I was imagining that in terms of, I'm trying to think of the right noun, priority, potential occupants of, or potential purchasers, potential homeowners. I was thinking at first, the first priority would be for people who are tenants, currently tenants of duplexes or duplex units that appear to be available for purchase. That's, and that's what your memo says, it's, yeah, all right. And then I was imagining that second priority would be residents of the Taylor Boulevard and Davis Street blocks, not the whole larger neighborhood. And that the third priority, if neither of the first two worked out, that the third priority would be the larger neighborhood.
You say larger neighborhood, what do you mean by?
The one that you have a map of.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. And by Taylor Boulevard, I guess I mean from the top to the bottom, from north to south. And Davis, I don't really remember the map, I don't know how far to the east it goes.
Basically, anybody living on Taylor and Davis.
But I don't know if that's viable, frankly, from a legal point of view, to say Taylor Boulevard and Davis, but that's what I was imagining. And I wonder if you have any reaction to that, and then whether any other council members have something to say.
No, we don't have a problem. I don't know, it's not a fair housing if we do preference, correct?
I think that's fine.
So, we can, we can proceed that way.
Kind of thought that's what it was too, that was a little narrower in scope in terms of the initial priorities.
Yeah, is that what you all understood too?
Based on location and not race, or?
Yeah.
I can't hear you, Eleanor, sorry.
I'm sorry. The decision is being made based on location, not race, or some protected class.
So, there'd be no difficulty in inserting that as the spatial areas?
We'll probably send a letter to that whole neighborhood to find out who's interested. I mean, we're first going to talk to the tenants about, if we find a place to purchase, we'll talk to those tenants, see what their situation is, if they want to buy that unit first. They would be the first priority. Second priority, we could say, anyone living on those two streets. Then the next priority, anyone that. Then the next priority, anyone in that neighborhood. We, no matter what, we have to sell it to somebody below 80% of median income. That's just a federal requirement. So any buyer will be low to moderate income, but we can put that location criteria on there for preferences.
Also, you know, you said here, if tenants are not interested in homeownership and unwilling or unable to move with relocation assistance, the city will not purchase the home. Great that the city is not going to purchase the home if the people are not. I like that, but I think as soon as they say they, they don't want the homeownership, you should not even give them a, like a choice of moving out, and we will help you, because you're going to help them only for, I mean the city when I say you, I'm sorry. But, you know, the city will help them only for 13 years. You're not going to help them forever. You know, that's why I think we just need to take that away, the option of asking the people, giving assistance for 13 years. I don't know what the council thinks.
I don't think we can get around that. That's a federal requirement. So if I approach, if we approach them, and we're going to consider purchasing their property, if they want relocation assistance, Home Rules will say we require it, we have to provide it. I can't say they can't get it, or they're, they don't have...
I don't think, that's not what I heard. I think what you're saying is, that's it. If...
Yes.
If they're not interested in homeownership, then we move on to the next unit.
That's it. Exactly. Exactly, that's what exactly I...
So unless it's a tenant...
We don't purchase that unit. As I go to the next one, you know, you don't need to do that.
We could. It'd be difficult, because if I'm understanding you right, that means we approach a landlord, there's, there's a duplex, so that landlord or that property owner owns both. So if neither one wants to purchase their existing unit, but they're willing to move, like, three houses down, the landlord has another property, then that means we're only...
You mean in the same neighborhood? Or, or maybe they're going to move outside the neighborhood?
We're going to, I mean, typically, when we do relocation, we try to encourage the same neighborhood, but it's up to the tenant. Maybe they don't want to live in the same neighborhood. Maybe they want to...
That's why I don't encourage that.
No, but I'm just saying...
Wouldn't it be their choice, though?
Are you saying the only people eligible, I'd have to find a duplex where both owners are going to buy, we're not willing to open it up to Taylor-Davis Street? So I'm confused by that.
What you're saying, I'm sorry.
So if, if, if the tenant, if the tenant's not interested in ownership, if that takes the house out of the running for us to buy, you basically have to find a duplex where both tenants want to... Because we're not going to buy half a duplex, right? You have to buy a whole duplex. So...
I understand.
You've got a very, you're shrinking your pool quite a bit.
I don't know what...
And, and I guess our intent here was, it's the, you know, we present the residents, the tenants, I should say, with the relocation package. This is what would be available, and it's up to them. If they don't like it, then we, then, then we go away. But some may want it.
Right.
And, and some may be in a situation where the owners told them, I'm not going to lease again. So they, you know, they may take it. Maybe the owner plans to sell it on the private market. I think, I think our intent was to put that decision in the tenant's hands. And still, if they say no, then we walk away.
I really don't encourage that. That's still, you are displacing people.
But they may want to move, and you're not forcing them in any way to...
How do you know that if you're going to pay the difference in rent for 13 years, those people will be able to continue paying on that? Maybe we're going to put them there, and we pay, the city will pay three years or two years of the difference in the rent, and after that, the city will walk away, and those people cannot afford to do so again. And we are the one who causing this problem in the beginning.
I think it's important when the city approaches them and talks about the relocation assistance, that it's clear what we're going to pay, how long we're going to pay it. It doesn't mean that they're moving to somewhere that's more expensive. I think we have to have that discussion with them. It's not... I feel like you're making the assumption they're going to be in a worse position financially, which isn't necessarily the case.
And you're making assumption it's not going to be that case.
No, I'm, I'm not...
You don't know, and I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not making an assumption at all. I'm saying you need to have good communication. You don't know the place they're living, how much the landlord's going to raise the rent from year to year either. A move isn't necessarily bad for a tenant, but I think to give them the option...
We're giving them a choice, correct?
But, you know, I talk to the people, and I talk to the Black Voice Project, and I think that's what they want to see. And I'm proposing what I've been hearing. You guys want to agree it's okay, otherwise, I don't know. That's what I feel.
I guess I'm not...
After I talk to the people, and that's what I think is arising. Don't even give them option to go nowhere, they...
But they can say no.
But they can say no. If they say no, then they don't have to go anywhere.
Tracy, do we know if there's any owners right now that are willing to sell?
Based on our initial letter, five landlords came back. So we have five potential properties, but we didn't contact the landlords or the tenants because we didn't know your direction.
And do we know if any of those properties are empty at this point, or if...
No, I didn't look into that, no.
There is some.
We've not investigated it further, just because we didn't know.
Okay.
And so they would only be eligible to purchase if both tenants seek to stay and purchase the property, correct?
Seek to stay or are willing to consider relocation. Because with relocation, we have to pay the moving expense, and then we have to pay the cost different. So if it's in the same neighborhood and the rent's the same, there's no money, you don't pay any ongoing rental assistance.
And if they say no to relocation...
Then we will not buy the property.
Not eligible.
Yeah.
That's what my, so I think we should keep that, because if they say no, we're not going to buy that property, and we're going to go somewhere else. I like that. That's my understanding. I have a question relating to Page 2, November 2019 through March 2019. You said, "Sell homes to income-qualified tenants with a preference for existing tenants in the unit and then those already living in the neighborhood. The homebuyer must meet the federal homebuyer underwriting criteria, which considers housing expense and debt-to-income ratios a federal requirement. The city can provide up to $35,000 of down payment assistance based upon their need." I know with the receipt of the home funds, we are bound by federal rules in terms of that piece of it. But at least in terms of the $35,000 with city funds, I seem to recall at our previous meeting, we actually had a discussion on that precise issue. And at least as to that, there, there was a little bit more flexibility in terms of those funds, because those are not federal funds. Am I, remember we had that discussion, and someone stood up and said, "No, actually, you can"?
The homebuyer that goes into the...
Yeah.
With home funds, they have to receive homebuyer counseling. They have to meet the minimum requirements, you know, for debt to, loan to, the two ratios that I'm looking at, the housing expense ratio and the debt-to-income ratio. They have to meet those. If there's some cushion there, that's fine, but they have to meet those minimum, because we don't want to place somebody in a house that they can't maintain, or that they go in foreclosure.
So what I'm wondering is, is that in order to try to meet those minimum thresholds, will they be able to consider the receipt of potentially $35,000 to meet? Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
You know, to meet those thresholds, there might be households that only need $20,000, at $35,000, and you can spend that extra money on rehab or...
Okay. Perfect.
Whatever else. But basically, if that means if, if with that $35,000 we provide, if they still don't meet those, the minimum criteria, then they're not a candidate to, to buy it.
And the 140, is that, like, projected to be the cost per unit?
Well, we estimate if it was $60,000 per home, and we have $100,000 committed, then we have 140,000 remain, basically $35,000 a unit that we need, that we, we need to some direction about where that source of funds would come from.
Yeah, speaking on that, I see here you, they said the fund will be coming from Housing Trust Fund for Johnson County.
There's a possibility.
I really encourage the fund to come as the same thing. And we discussed last time, we said the $60,000 that being used for university program, we need to use the same amount here, which is going to be, in this case, 25 from the home fund and 35. I don't want to see this is because that we are, we are doing it as a neighborhood stabilization. We've been doing the same thing for 69 houses that we've been, we sold it out. And even the last house that we spent $100,000 just to remodel the last house that we sold out as a university program. I, I really would like to see the 35,000 coming out from the general fund as, you know, the whole 140 to come out from the general fund, as we did the same thing for the university program. And, you know, I don't know how, but you, why should we just take from the money that we, put it aside for affordable housing? So we can just do this.
As staff, wherever you want the money to come from, if you direct me to apply to Housing Trust Fund for, for down payment assistance, I will. If you guys say that you have the money, that's great. If you tell me you're going to take it from land banking or...
Because I saw it there. I saw that what you guys recommending, but...
Yeah, we're, our recommendation is that you take it from affordable housing funds. If you want to take it from the general fund, it'd be an unbudgeted expense. We'd use basically reserves and surplus dollars to do that. We have the dollars to do that, so if you want general fund dollars, that's fine. We can't divert from the university program, because we've already spent our university allocation for this year.
I'm talking, we are not going to do it this year, of course. You know, this is, yes, we're talking about it. I'm talking, I'm talking about next year, you know, and that's what I really propose.
I would agree with the general fund concept. Subject to review this January in terms of that process, but I've been a big fan of the university program, and I think that I view this as potential expansion innovation on that program, hopefully, that'll sort of like a pilot. And so I would support that as well.
So Tracy, we're talking about $35,000 times four units, is that right?
140.
We budgeted 240,000, home is paid for 100,000, so it could be 140,000. Yeah, 140,000 that we would need. I just, I didn't know whether I should bring this up or not, but at the last council meeting, you guys directed Sand Development, the Lytec developer for the property on Rochester, to, if they could provide further targeting in rents, how much they would need. They're going to have a request, it's going to go through HCDC this Thursday for 200,000. So that request is going to come to you as well. So you have 140,000 with this request. You'll have a $200,000 request at HCDC reviews on Thursday. So I just wanted to give you some heads up about what's coming down for affordable housing. That's outside our affordable housing fund.
Right. I'll add to that. You, it hasn't reached you yet, but there's also a request for around 200,000 from the city for the Delray, an additional money for Delray.
What's a Delray?
Delray is the Lytec project on Dubuque Street.
Oh, the Lytec, on Dubuque.
So you've got, between, between this and the two, two programs there, you've got over half a million dollar in, in new affordable housing requests that we've got to, we've got to figure out here in the next few weeks.
I guess those, to me, those two different programs for the Lytec, it could be from the other ones, wherever, but this one is the university program, and I want to stick to that. I really want to see that, because we cannot give opportunity to 69 housing. And when it come to this, the same program is stabilizing the neighborhood. When it come to this one, we said, oh, we can take it from somewhere else.
Were we talking about the general fund?
Yeah, general fund.
General fund, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Maz and Rockney on this. I think it is fruitful to think about this as another neighborhood stabilization program. And therefore, we should be thinking about funding it in a comparable way to the university program. We'll see how it goes. We'll do this one time this coming fiscal year, or however long it takes to, to do it. And then can look, look at, you know, to consider the situation in the future, just like we have been doing with regard to the university program.
So we'll work on that come January with your budget meetings, because you'll, you will see our recommendation only includes one university house for next year. So if you want to transfer university dollars to this program, you've got 60,000 in my, in the budget I'm recommending, which will leave another 80,000 that we'll need to add to the, the budget request that you see. So we can work through that in January.
Does that sound reasonable to the rest of you?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions for Tracy?
Thank you for your passion and a lot changing, and you being, doing awesome job. Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I should have asked you to come up earlier.
Yeah.
I'm glad Simon's still back here. It might have been awkward.
Can I summarize to clarify and make sure we have our marching orders? We'll take, we'll take care of the budget issue in January. We're going to make a three-tier selection system, tenants, Taylor-Davis, then larger neighborhood in terms of preference. And you are okay with us proceeding, which means we will start contacting landlords that have expressed interest and talking to tenants. You're okay going down that?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
I mean, it might take a while. I mean, even though we've got these five, we might run through those five and have to send another letter, so it might take some time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, can we go back to the December 6 information packet, IP number three, why do all new apartment buildings look the same? I don't really want to open up a discussion about this, but it struck me as a pretty informative and spot-on claim about why we're seeing in our city and other cities around the country new apartment buildings that look pretty much alike. And just the way it's written is pretty instructive. And I liked one phrase in particular. The phrase was, I don't know, replacing craft with equations. And that helps explain the sort of geometric angular, rectangular shape of all these things. All right, sorry, I don't want to talk about that much. Anything else in the rest of that information packet?
Yeah, I guess I have IB 10, maybe?
December 6, Maz?
December 6, no, no.
And if we're done with that, well, we can move on to, back to 13?
No.
All right, let's go to the December 13 packet.
IP 12. I just found that rather interesting, and I want to thank Carol DePross for, for sharing that article, because it's interesting concept, because historically, I don't even like to say the word cockroaches are thought of as not having much, much worth. But instead, this article makes you think of it, and I think they termed it a biotechnological pathway, as far as converting food waste. And just the thought of the numbers, one company had 3.4 million of them, and another had 6 billion. And those numbers just kind of make my skin crawl to think about it, but, but it is a very interesting idea. So thank you, Carol, for sharing that.
Other items in the January, or December 13 packet?
IB 10. The Stephanie Report for the Human Rights about using the racial toolkits. I, I think this is really amazing. I love it, you know? Especially, I like the, how the housing authority, it was very interesting for me that they, how they use survey the total amount, like, English professionally, you know, in, like, this because it is really, in the housing authority, there is many, many people of color and people that they don't, their English is not the first language. And it was really amazing for me that they being using this to help out those people, which is great, yeah.
And we're mentioning Kingsley a lot tonight, but Kingsley still deserves major kudos for a lot of the groundwork that he did on the diversity projects. So Kingsley, I doubt you're watching, but if you are, great job.
I don't know, he might be.
Hopefully, he's not, but...
On the lines of that, with the equity, all the information that was given, it, it was kind of interesting that through, kind of throughout some of the reports, though, it was mentioned that transportation is a big barrier for a lot of, lot of these things. And I think we need to keep that in mind when we do our transit study and give that a lot of thought.
Yeah, I highlight that, and I never said it, but thank you for saying it, yeah.
So I should mention IP number six, which is, concerns a memo I wrote concerning a council internship program. I'm going to say something that's sort of for the benefit of whoever's watching. So as you know, I proposed in a December 6 memo to you that we consider creating a one-year trial program in which paid interns from the University of Iowa or Kirkwood could work for individual council members. I also propose that this trial program be limited to not more than three council members. And I recognize that details would have to be worked out, including tasks, constraints, hours of work, and so on. I think that brief December 6 memo, I don't think, that brief December 6 memo seems to have generated some negative feedback in social media and elsewhere. And as you know, in retrospect, I should have been clearer in my memo that I am not in retrospect, I should have been clearer in my memo that I am not asking you tonight to approve this proposed program or to discuss it at length tonight. I simply want to find out tonight whether four or more of you would like to discuss the idea further during a future council session. That's all I intended to be doing, and not opening up a deep conversation about the specific topic.
I'm not, I mean, we discussed it during our strategic planning back in January, we were interested in moving forward, and I'm not quite sure why it's coming back now.
Because, I'm going to say why. You know, the first thing I was really surprised, this went to the media, as Meyer said, it was just meant to be asking us if there is somebody interested, and the council member who asked our mayor to bring this, you know, for discussion, let me just take my, because I wrote a note about this, and I cannot see, bring this for discussion, and let me tell you why. One of our goal as a council has been facilitating the strategic cooperation with the University of Iowa. As a part of this process, and after I talked to many students who would like to be engaged in the government in the future, I wanted to explore our cooperation with some classes at the University of Iowa to see whether the University of Iowa through class could work with us on a matter of sharing concerns such as climate change, affordable housing, and other urban planning. I never intend to prove both this as a paid internship opportunity, but rather as education opportunity that could benefit the student at whole and the community especially. And I think this is, could have really positive, you know, benefit in the future for, for everyone, but I did not intend that, I don't know who took it to the media, but I, I really encourage people to find out about exactly what the person who proposes meant, far as before we can get through everything on the media and make the people just start like assumption, I've been like receiving a lot of call and a lot of attack and on social media about this, you know, but I'm not afraid, I always say what I want to say, and you know, that's what about me, and I just tell you now what I meant. Hopefully, we will talk to each other before throwing anything to the media. Thank you.
I'm glad you brought that up, Jim, and your comments too, because I too was kind of surprised that this was seen as a newsworthy item, and that even certain elected officials have been weighing in on it with comments before we, as a council, even really fully discussed it, the proposal with more information on it, or even any guidance to Jim from us as to the possible usage of an intern, so I was really surprised at that, and I would like to take a little bit more time to talk about it at some point.
I would not like to, I support the concept, I think we've all been trying to, for a long time, to figure out sort of how do we unlock this, this cooperation with the University of Iowa in terms of really facilitating all the talented students they have, plus with the needs that we have. So, in the abstract, I am supportive of that concept. However, I'm a big believer in that sifting process of the strategic plan. This did not get the support at that early stage. Strategic plans can be modified, but I don't think we should modify those strategic plans unless there are, as, you know, extreme circumstances to cause us to reconsider some of our assumptions in the original strategic plan, and I don't think that those are present now. I think we need to focus on the strategic plan that we have, so I would not support further exploration. At the extent that this does remain a critical issue that we may want to explore, it should go into whoever's elected the next council for their strategic plan review. So that's where I'm coming from at this point.
So I should probably elaborate just a little bit. Maz and I had a brief conversation in, at one of the events we went to, and it was a quick conversation. I understood Maz to say it would be helpful for her to have some support from an intern of some kind. I probably jumped too quickly, at the time I said, well, I cannot make that decision on my own, I'll bring it to the council, and the council can make its own judgment, but then I put it into language, and that's where I probably jumped too quickly, because I didn't really fully understand what you had in mind.
It was too seconded, yeah.
Yeah, and instead, what I thought was, as you alluded to, Susan, we'd already gone through this in the strategic plan, so I did not want to bring that back up, so I thought, okay, well, I need to modify it in some fashion, so, okay, I'll make it into a temporary program and put a cap on the number of council members who could possibly be eligible to participate in the internship program, and then just open it up and see if y'all were interested in talking about it more. I'm not pushing it by any means, and if there's a better way to work with interns, paid or unpaid, paid or unpaid through the university or Kirkwood, I'm all for that. In fact, I had a lot of interns work for me at the university, and I should tell you also, 50 friggin' years ago, I worked as an intern for a member of the Board of Alderman in Louisville, Kentucky, and I found it to be a very instructive experience, but I'm not, I am not pushing this proposal, I just wanted to see if y'all had some interest.
I appreciate Maz giving her explanation. I'm very new to the council, as all of you know, but I send staff questions, and I'm not sure that an intern, I think an intern actually would have to go to staff to get my questions answered, and so, if I'm not mistaken, the city of Iowa City has intern opportunities. And so, for me, I think to cut out the middleman of an intern, in my opinion, that will turn to staff and say, where do I find this information, and staff guides them through it, my personal thought is that we continue as we are, talking to the staff. I can tell you, sometimes I feel like I'm asking too many things, and I try to, you know, go back, but I've been encouraged to just ask, and I've never gotten any type of resistance, is always welcomed, that, you know, I get answers very quickly and very thorough, so I think that, you know, maybe the city, you know, could, if we're feeling like we're a burden, maybe that's where we need to, you know, within ourselves, realize that we're not a burden, and the city really, the staff is really willing to help. And, you know, interns on that end could be a little more political, where maybe that, you know, I don't know, assign someone for city staff that, that works with Jeff and sends a response, I'm not sure.
Can I say one quick thing? I know you didn't intend to make this into a long discussion, so I'll make it really quick. To respond to that point, though, what if there is a situation where we receive feedback from members of the engineering community, I think, for example, of stormwater, where we get sort of some grumblings from time to time that we, that we're out of date, and we then bring it to staff, and staff says, no, we're not, we're doing the right thing, and they can totally have that position. I do think at some point in the future, perhaps at strategic council, strategic planning level at a future time, the council may want to discuss the optimal conditions under which they can innovate for policy, because I do think we have to have, to some degree, a policymaking role. So if we're in a situation where we candidly disagree with where maybe a staff position is on a particular issue, that there should be a mechanism for us to just get a second opinion. I don't view second opinions as an insult, I view it as a part of professionalism. I know sometimes there's cases, the United States Supreme Court, where if there's no one to brief an issue, or they don't, they need a different opinion, sometimes they'll appoint counsel just for purposes of hearing that different out. So, well, I think we should close the issue for now, because it did not make the strategic plan process. I think there may be a point in the future where we would evaluate what happens under that scenario, if we want to move policy, how do we do it if there's a difference of opinion internally within staff, because that may happen from time to time.
All right.
Longer than you want it to go.
I think there's not majority support for pursuing this particular idea. You and I should talk afterwards, you know, about other possible ways of getting support.
Sure, no problem.
Anything else on the December 13 packet? Like, I don't know, continuous versus ruptured cities?
Yeah, well, this is sort of the, the third in a series, unplanned series, you know, we've been, Jeff posted a couple of weeks ago, or meetings ago, the Strong Towns article on why are we only seeing luxury housing, and then more recently, the, you know, you know, the one about why are all new apartment buildings looking the same. This is, this is yet another that, that I encountered, and I felt it spoke again to a very, what I see as a very important issue that we're facing in Iowa City, as well as cities across the world, and it framed it in a way that I just found was really compelling, this notion of the continuous city, which is referring really to that notion of urban planning that I've been supportive of, which is the idea that continuity, extent to a city, the traditional city where you have kind of basically what we're advocating, or was advocated in the Riverfront Crossings Plan, where you, you urbanize an area by increasing densities to support walkability and all those other values. But I found the continuous city a very interesting way of expressing that, both spatially and temporally, in terms of time. And then contrasting it to the ruptured city, so if you, if you do not pursue the goal of the continuous city, that fabric can be ruptured. It can be ruptured either by buildings or transportation projects, and that can do considerable damage to a city. So anyway, that, that I found was a very powerful way of framing something that I think we've been discussing, or at least I've been emphasizing for some time now.
I liked a quote in there, John, that builds cities that people enjoy inhabiting. I like that. Food for thought.
I just mentioned IP 8, thank Eleanor for that, Jim's request, just kind of clarifying some of the issues in terms of our process and decision-making, if the developer comes back formally requesting the height bonuses, so that was good information.
Yeah, thanks for writing that down.
I agree, it's very well done.
I want to jump back to IP 6 for just a second, because some comments were made about this, making it to the newspapers. I received a phone call from Zachary Smith of the Press Citizen, which I do occasionally, and maybe, I'm sure he probably calls other council members, just asking anything going on, you know, that I need, that I ought to know about. And it came on the heels of having received that email from Jim. I felt it was newsworthy. I felt it was newsworthy because it was a, it was written as a proposal. It was not written as, do we, can we get four people to agree to discuss this in, in a work session? It was written as a concrete proposal for an paid internship program. I felt that was newsworthy, and so I shared, it was a public document at that point in time, it had been addressed to council, as well as to all seven council members individually, and to the city manager. So, I was not violating anything in terms of public record, and because it was presented to us as a specific, concrete proposal, I felt it was newsworthy, and I shared it with him. So, just to get that on the table, that's how it ended up in the paper. I would encourage all council members in the future, if there is an issue that you are interested in having us discuss, and maybe put on a work session, that you call and talk to other council members, maybe to give them a heads up and give kind of your background on it, and then bring it up in the work session to say, can we get four? Because the minute you start putting things in writing, and particularly to all of us, I think it, I think it takes on a lot more life, particularly when it was presented as you presented it, Jim, in that email, that maybe people don't intend. So sometimes verbal discussions are better ahead of getting certain things in writing, so.
And by the way, I receive also some same call from Zach all the time, but I don't think, you know, you can just make assumption about something and just tell the newspaper about it. That's my own idea, and, you know, you didn't even know what's going on about it, and you just give it to the news? I don't think that's what's like.
What I knew about it.
It seemed like you giving out, like, as if you want to just like make some people look bad. That's it. That's what I've been feeling, this is my first time I really, you know, experienced something like this in this council, or, you know, attacking or anything. Maybe you guys get used to it, or something like that, I don't know, but I just feel like this is really, for the people who are working together, and we being like a team, yes, we disagree in many things, but we are agreeing in many things for the best of this city, we just have to like slow down a little bit before we can jump to the media. Make sure you understand the same thing.
No, I want to make one more comment, please, because in Jim's email to the council members, there was no indication that any council member had talked to Jim at all about this. I had no idea.
You say I raised out.
No, it did not, not in Jim's original one. In his follow-up email to two members, to two council members at a time, he said that he had been contacted by a council member. So when I read Jim's email of Thursday, December 6, there was absolutely no indication that any council member had had any contact with him regarding this issue. It came across entirely as Jim's idea presenting this paid internship program. So this was not meant in any way, when I talked to Zach, to disparage you, to criticize you, to call you out, because I had absolutely no idea that any council member had had any discussion with Jim about this topic.
Still, yes, in general, we don't have to, we have to slow down before we can go to the media. We are, we are a team.
I don't agree with that.
And we're working together, and I hope, we don't have just to go and throw out that, and you don't know, you don't have, you don't even call me, or call Jim, or call any other council.
I didn't know you had anything to do with it.
Hold on.
Yeah, I'm just telling, you know, I really would like to lay out my ideas. When I think about something, I, I really don't scare, I need to say it, and I have, I guess this is freedom of speech, and I'm not saying something like implied or anything, I'm just saying what I think as a team we should do and how we can work together, but you did it, that's it.
Please, please, let's not make more of this than there is. I made a mistake, and the mistake was not being clear about what I wanted the council to consider tonight. My mistake, and, you know, so let's not make it into a really big traumatic thing.
Yes, no problem.
So, and, you know, next time, I'll take a little more care in writing my emails or letters, or whatever they might be.
Sure.
But it's my mistake, my bad, and we need to move on from that.
No problem, we'll learn from there.
Yeah. Okay, so are we ready to go to council updates?
I have a work session proposal. I don't know when to present it.
Sure.
All right. So this is in regards to transportation. I know that we have the transportation study, and just wanted to see if I could put it on the work session, so that we can get an update about the transportation, the transportation study.
You mean the transit study?
The transit study, yes. In addition, I just wanted to maybe talk about, get some information about what would it look like if there was regional services, regional transportation, and I think if maybe Ken Ralston or someone can give us like what's happened in the past, what are the benefits, what are the hurdles, if there was a regional system, and this regional system, I think, would somewhat be in regards to Corville, Iowa City, North Liberty potentially, some of the other seats, and so that is the proposal that I have to bring to the work session.
As to the first, I would support that. As to the second, correct me if I'm wrong.
How you doing?
That's a super complicated issue in terms of unifying the systems. I'm not saying we shouldn't address it, we could probably peripherally address that, but my recollection is that's a super, unless I'm wrong.
To create a taxing district, we're, by state code, we're not big enough to create a transportation authority, which would be a separate taxing district. We could, through a 2080 arrangement, just an agreement with cities, run a regional service like we do with Johnson County seats.
Okay.
When we went into the transportation study and talks with the other cities, it was pretty clear early on that, that wasn't of interest to Corville and the university, but, so we didn't push that issue, and I don't think it ever made it up to your level, it was more the staff discussions, so I think if you want to, if you guys want to have that level or discussion, we can help frame that for you. Ultimately, it's going to take political leaders to political leaders in communities to get that support.
Okay, I would support on the work session.
You're, you're already thinking about having a work session about the transit study, aren't you, an update on where that stands?
We will have a consultant selection for you sometime in early 2019, we just got the proposals back on December 10, so we're reviewing those, Corville's reviewing those, university's reviewing those, we'll probably bring firms in to interview, it's a process, but ultimately, that'll be a contract that we hold that you will have to approve. I don't know if that will require a work session item with council or not, but we, definitely, if there's going to be a desire to study a regional system, you want that included in your scope, so sooner rather than later would be best for that type of discussion.
Yeah, I think Bruce knows from conversations he and I have had together about this, I don't think there, it would be fruitful to open up this regional discussion about transportation in general in terms of combining systems, that's a very complicated thing, and as I mentioned, it's, I'm aware of 20 years' worth of talk about how great it would be to combine... be to combine systems, and how, how hard it is to do that.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I respect that. I mean, I think right now is just asking for a periphery view of what that, what's been done in the past, what conversations has happened, and minimally, you know, if we were to do it, what would it involve, and the complications. So, it's not getting into detail, but it's just giving us overview of if we were to go, to give us information at this point. We, you know, if it's something that we want to move forward with after briefing, then we can decide that as a council. But I think we have the transit, the transit study coming right now. Now would be a great opportunity just to revisit the big picture, and then if it's something that's not of interest, is way out of our scope, at least we've had the opportunity to, to discuss it.
The one thing that Bruce is bringing to the table that I think is, is particularly worthwhile would be maybe to have Kent Ralston come and give a 10 or 15-minute presentation just on kind of the background of transit. He understands the federal funding and the difference in funding between the university and Correville and us, and, you know, the difference in wages and unions and some of that stuff that, because I think there will be a lot of people in the public who may say or question, you're going through all this, you're doing all this transit study, why aren't you looking at combining the systems? And so, to have him give us kind of a brief, and I realize it's long and complicated, but limited, to kind of, these could be the pros, but these are all the complications to doing it. I think it's going to be very clear that we cannot do it right now, and I personally do not want to delay this transit study.
Yeah, me neither.
But I think to do it in a way upfront, kind of right now, that makes it easier for all of us to respond to the public when they ask, well, why aren't you having them look at combining the systems? It gives us some real bullet points to respond with, in saying, we talked about it, we thought about it, but, so rather than necessarily much time in a work session, if we kind of limited Kent to a 10-minute presentation, I think that could be worthwhile.
That'd be kind of what you want, isn't it?
Absolutely, yes.
Don't we do that, Jeff?
I would support that.
All right, anything else?
I have one quick item related to the pending list. We haven't scheduled anything in January, and I probably won't, because I am pretty sure there's going to need to be some budget discussions. However, as you may recall, the council recently sent an advisory recommendation against a rezoning in the county out on American Legion Road. The Board of Supervisors has deferred their vote. They have a provision, there's a provision in the fringe area agreement that's very similar to when we have consultations with P&amp;Z. If there's a disagreement from the city on a rezoning matter for the Johnson County Board of Supervisors, there's supposed to be a resolution committee that meets quickly to discuss that and hopefully resolve it before they take their final vote. At their last meeting, the Board of Supervisors appointed two supervisors, I'm unclear who those two are, and Josh Bussard, the Planning Director, to serve on that committee, and they've asked that we appoint a committee of elected officials and staff. The idea is three from both jurisdictions, to iron that out in hopes that they can put that back on their agenda on January 24. So, I'm looking to the council to see if I could get a volunteer or two that could join city staff in having those discussions with the county. I don't think it'll be very time-intensive, but you already know your time in January is booked pretty heavy on, with some extra budget meetings. And I don't have any dates or times, we would just work with your schedule.
I'm happy to volunteer on that.
I would be as well. Bruce, or?
Two, you want two?
Well, John, it's up to you to decide, it's not, I think, two would be fine. We'll have you work with someone in our planning department.
So, what, John and Bruce?
Yeah.
Okay, John and Bruce, okay. We'll be in touch, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, I think we're done with our work session for tonight. Thank you.